Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, today is November 5th, 2024. It's 3:00 PM and this is a city council voting meeting. I'm so encouraged to see everyone show up today to help the courthouse lighting with the Friends of Jersey Lilies.[305.52][305.52](Laughter) No? Different topic? But thank you all for coming. So, do we have any introductions or announcements? Mayor Protam?
Yes, we do. Anybody that hasn't voted yet, please get up and leave the room. I'm kidding.[322.64][322.64](Laughter) No, just a reminder, the city offices will be closed on Monday in honor of Veterans Day. Thank you to those who have served our country so bravely. And we invite everyone to come appreciate[337.28][337.28](Applause) our veterans and the Veterans Day Parade on Monday with opening ceremonies starting at 10:30. Just a reminder, we do have vacancies on our Building Safety Advisory and Appeals Board, as well as for our Community Development Block grant Citizens Advisory Committee. Please visit our website or contact our Clerk's Office to learn more about these opportunities. And again, just to remember to vote today. If you haven't already voted, we'll pray for peace and moving forward together as one nation. And that's it.[371.03][371.03](Applause)
We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Julie Coslow from the Orde T Jewish Community, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilman Moore.
Good afternoon, Hugh Mayor Good and the City Council members. Thank you for your service, as always. And as always, it's an honor to be here today, and I must say especially on such a day as this. This is the day when we Americans vote for the leadership of our future. And as we speak, the polls are being tallied. The very process of free elections brings to the forefront of our minds the brilliance of the American Revolution and its hunger to harmonize human freedom with the collective responsibility. Few in our time are able to comprehend just how progressive an idea it was to ensure the personal freedom to vote one's conscience, to be protected in one's choice of religion, and to do so regardless of status, wealth, color, or influence. The right given to each and every human soul in our country to vote their conscience was indeed a profound paradigm shift in the human experience. Never had such a thing been imagined. As leaders with which both you and I are, our responsibility is to keep the peace, to keep the scales balanced so that our city, our world, does not devolve into warring camps. Peace and harmony are the underlying incentive for all things constitutionally America, and it is the leadership from all fronts that must reflect a steady respect for the law, for fairness, and for the ultimate integrity deserved by all humankind. Our future today seems in question. There is no certainty on Main Street. There is no peace to be exchanged between opposing ideas. We stand as if prepared for war. My prayer for all of us today, yet especially for those in leadership, is to balance your response, model the highest expression of integrity, uphold the law, and let the goodness of God guide our every step. May the work that you do here today lead to the betterment of society and to a brighter future for all Americans, whichever side of the battle lines they stand. Help the world to stop warring and guide it on its way towards peace. That was, after all, the driving force of the American Revolution, to create a country where freedom can grow through a fair and peaceful politic. God, please help us to do just that. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Very good. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
I'm still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Ru Singh.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. We have two presentations today. The first one will be a presentation in recognition of the Citizens Academy graduates.
If you attended the Citizens Academy recently, please come up to be recognized.
While you're assembling, I'll read a couple little things. The City of Prescott hosts a Citizens Academy to give residents an inside look at their local government and how it affects their daily lives. This opportunity offers a clearer understanding of city services and allows for open communication for people to learn and ask questions. Above all else, the Citizens Academy connects people and helps keep the small-town feel that many of us have stayed here or moved here for. The conclusion is to thank you for all of our graduates here today for taking the time to participate in this wonderful program, and thank you to all of our city staff for making this such a successful class. We will now ask all of our participants to line up, which we've done, and let's see, we're going to pass out your certificates.
Thanks, Mayor. Do you want to? I will call them there in order.
We're missing a few people today, unfortunately. I think it has to do with the election. But first, I want to hand out to Madonna. Madonna, are you here? Oh, Madonna's not here either. How about Judy Hansen? There you go. Should be the next one.
Thank you. And the committee of citizens.
And Robert Hansen. Related, I'm sure. Congratulations.[686.01][686.01](Applause) I think we're missing Lou, but Elaine?
Yes.
Okay. Elaine O'Connor. Thank you very much.[698.32][698.32](Applause) And Brenda Terrace. Thank you. Thank you very much for attending.[708.63][708.63](Applause) Thank you very much. And I don't see our picture taker here today, but we do thank you. Do any of you want to say anything? Want to say how wonderful it is? It was.
I encourage everyone in this room to take this course. You will learn more about the city, how the money is spent, and how you can best give back to what is such a great place to live. Thank you.
So true.[739.13][739.13](Applause)
And thank you all for showing up to congratulate these graduates.[744.32][744.32](Laughter)
And while Mayor and Mayor Protam make their way back up, I'll invite Josh up to do the presentation for the Friends of Jersey Lily regarding the annual courthouse lighting fundraising efforts.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me today. I've never had this full of council chambers for this meeting, so (laugh) thank you, everybody, for coming out today. The Friends of Jersey Lily, if, for those that don't know, we are a volunteer committee that has been supporting the annual courthouse lighting for, this is year 16. It started with previous owner Tommy Meredith. The first year, Tommy came down here and asked Council to light the infamous Black Hole in front of Jersey Lily Saloon. Council told them he would have to go do something about that, and he raised, I've heard, between $500 and $1,000 that year. Last year, we raised $79,200.[823.63][823.63](Applause) We have become the largest contributor because of this community and all the individual businesses, people, everybody that support what we do, to make sure that courthouse lighting happens every year. It's about $125,000 cost. It continues to go up each year. And so therefore, this year, our goal is $100,000. We're significantly on our way. We had raised prior to our silent auction, starting $32,000 already this year. And we've got a few things going on from here forward to wrap up the fundraising and get us to $100,000. New this year, we did some sponsorships, which we started in April, and we had Spice Traveler and Whiskey Row Boot Race jump on board with us, bringing the two biggest times of the year, our Frontier Days Week and the Christmas season together. So, those were our biggest sponsors. We thank them for all their support. Our raffle tickets, as a lot of you know, come with a donor bulb that we hang on the back bar. Those went up October 1st, and we'll hang on the back bar all the way through the middle of January after our Lights Out Party. Those raffle tickets start at $25 and go up from there. They are for three different items. The Artful Eye Jewelers donated a beautiful piece. Mary and Bill Niebecker donated a beautiful bronze. And then Prescott Tire Pros donated a set of four wheels and tires valued at $2,500. So, if you drove here today, you need a raffle ticket.[931.63][931.63](Laughter) You can purchase the raffle tickets now and until January 9th at Jersey Lily Saloon. Just come on up. We take cash, card, or check, however you want to get it. We'll take it. And then online as well at thefriendsofjls.com. Our silent auction actually kicked off yesterday at 5:00 PM, and our goal there is $17,000 for that, just that one piece. We've already come over $10,000 in less than 24 hours, so we're well on our way there. That will run for one week, online only. We have about 180 items in that, our largest one yet. So those will close out on Monday, Veterans Day, at 5:00 PM. So go on to thefriendsofjls.com to start your bidding, register. There's some great items there for you. And then, this Thursday, so in two days, we have our live auction. You can go online to thefriendsofjls.com right now, preview the items there, and then 24 hours in advance, so Wednesday at 5:00 PM, our auction will open for pre-bidding online. That'll go for 24 hours and then close out at 5:00 PM on the 7th. On the 7th, it'll transition to in-person only bidding, and that's when we'll have our live auction there, and we will hopefully sell and raise over $32,000 at that event. There's some really good items in there this year. It's a great time. Come on out, support. El Charo Norte donates dinner for everybody, so we'll serve that when doors open at 4:00. We've got a couple new things at the event this year, a 50/50 raffle that'll take place for the first hour. You can come out, buy your tickets. And then we're going to add a bumpet raffle to the items as well. We'll explain that for those that come out that night. So, last but not least, our Lights Out Party and Raffle. That will take place January 9th at 5:00 PM. That's kind of our wrap-up and thank you to the whole community. That's where we'll announce our final total for the year and sell our last-minute tickets and wrap things up. It's right before the lights will go out, and so it's a perfect time to pull the raffle tickets. You do not have to be present at this event to win the raffle items. We will hold them for you. But it is a great time to come out, and Catering by Liz also donates hors d'oeuvres for that event. So, we appreciate, again, this entire community, their support. What we do is not possible without all the businesses and individuals that are making monetary donations, donating, I think we have altogether 200 to 300 items in our auctions. That takes a community to make happen. So, thank you, everybody, for the support. And then, Council, if any of you brought your wallets today, we'd love some donations.
Well, thank you, Josh. And I remember when Tommy Meredith would come up and address the Council, and he was petrified to talk. Gary Hebert also was one of his big organizers that helped raise money, and I'm just so pleased that you took over.[1127.25][1127.25](Laughter) That you took the baton here and continued the momentum. So, there's one more, Josh. Don't walk away.
And did you pass around a little pot to the whole audience while we're here?[1144.24][1144.24](Laughter) We set this up for you.
Yeah, I hope everyone will support the Friends of the Jersey Lilies and make sure this year is another great courthouse lighting and continues to support and grow in its community support of this just worthy and highly-recognized event. I'm sure it's one of the many reasons why we're recognized as Arizona's official Christmas city, and even Newsweek recently recognized us as one of the top 10 Christmas cities in the whole country. So, thank you, Josh.[1184.01][1184.01](Applause)
Thank you, guys, for having me today, and I wish everybody Happy Election Day.[1194.58][1194.58](Laughter)
Okay, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
There we go. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the Council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the Council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. With this in mind, following today's meeting, no further public comment will be taken during the open call regarding the proposed apartment complex and the rodeo grounds. I have five public comment cards today. The first is from Jim Garing.[1262.83][1262.83](Applause)
Mayor and Council, thank you for having me, and I'm here to talk about some serious things to this Council. You're aware, I'm sure, that we have an agreement, one signed by, one approved by the City Council years ago, signed by the mayor, city clerk, and the city attorney. It applies to the City of Prescott, the Prescott Lakes Community Association, the Prescott Lakes Commercial Association, and the developer parties that develop Prescott Lakes. I just read the agreement again today for what I would just guess is the 40th time. There is no clause in this agreement that allows any party to unilaterally change the agreement. You have to have agreement from all the signatories to the agreement to change it. The Prescott Lakes Master Plan is Exhibit A1 to the agreement we have. So, again, it's part of the agreement. It's something you cannot change unilaterally. You have to have our approval, at least Prescott Lakes Community Association and the developer parties. Now, I've been working with the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. The one I'm working with now is one I obtained from the city clerk a while back pursuant to a public records request for the latest amended Prescott Lakes Master Plan. So it is got to be the up-to-date one. The problem we have is the city staff is currently processing a 400-unit apartment complex below our story, a neighborhood of Prescott Lakes. It doesn't comply with the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. Let me explain. But first, let me read a quote from the Master Plan. "All development activity within Prescott Lakes shall be in accordance with the Master Plan and this agreement," the development agreement. "The Master Plan specifically outlines and shows the development on the site where the city is processing a 400-unit apartment complex." That project, the one that's in our Master Plan, has added 11 small buildings, so there'll be 13 in total, and constructs a total of 150 parking spaces for this development. So if this were small commercial or high-density residential, you'd have 75 units there. You've got enough parking for 75 with 150 parking places. But the 400-unit apartment complex has 800 parking places. It's five times the size of the development shown on our Master Plan. You guys are required to comply. You're not complying with our Master Plan by allowing that kind of a development to be processed in a ministerial way through city staff. Yes, the Master Plan can be changed. You just have to have agreement from all the parties that signed the agreement. It's that simple. Planning claims that there is density available, except for a problem. The city cannot transfer density. Only the developer parties can transfer density within Prescott Lakes. You have to read the agreement. The city can't.
Jim, you've got another 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Let me leave you with this, then, since I'm out of time. If I were in your shoes, I would be wondering why I would want to do this to 3,000 voters. Thank you.[1515.51][1515.51](Applause)
Jim Orr. Ladies and gentlemen.
I'm going to admonish you.
Please hold your applause.[1526.36][1526.36](Applause)
I will clear this room unless we have decorum here. So, any efforts to show appreciation or to shout down any of the people that are making these comments will not be tolerated. We expect you to have decorum, and I appreciate your support here, but please have decorum, and we're not going to allow expressions of appreciation or discord. Thank you.
Jim Orr, the next speaker.
My name is Jim Orr. I'm a member of the Prescott Lakes Community Association Board of Directors. You know, as I was outside listening, I pondered that there is a lot of similarity between city councils and board of directors, but one glaring difference: you're a lot more So, I'm not going to take as long as Jim today. I believe you guys have good understanding what we're talking about, but I want to discuss belief and faith. We believe in equal representation. We believe in a process that is inclusive of all parties involved. We believe agreements and city codes must be followed. We believe the exclusion of the Prescott Lakes Community Association, who has standing in this matter, is a fatal flaw. We believe any process that institutes confirmation bias is fatally flawed. We believe our elected officials are the final decision-makers, not city staff. We believe sunlight is the best disinfectant. We believe any project, especially one of this magnitude, that will permanently alter our landscape, the fabric of our community, and the continuity of our community, is in desperate need of sunlight. We believe you are our sunlight. Faith. We have faith that you will ask questions, that you will research on your own, that you will gather all information that you need to make a informed decision based on the totality of all the information available to you. Thank you very much. Have a great day.[1694.01][1694.01](Applause)
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I am, and my wife, are residents of Prescott Lakes. We live less than a quarter of a mile from the proposed development. And I think the high attendance here today tells you what kind of interest there is on Election Day for the room to be filled. There will be more attendance after Election Day, I can guarantee you. They, there are thousands of residents that will be very interested in hearing your response to this, and they will have a bunch of questions to include. What will the impact of 800 new automobiles in our community do? Will this development fill our, fit within our planned community? How much development, will this development impact our HOA infrastructure? Because there is HOA, substantial infrastructure there will be impacted by this amount of traffic increase. And what are the water use impact of this development? More importantly, we ask, they will ask why the clear requirements of Section 9.5 of the Land Use Code has been, has not been met. There are a number of factors that have not been met in the apparent fast-tracking of this agreement. For example, the city code, Land Use Code requires... For example, the city code, Land Use Code requires that BG pad-zoned developments, which this is, require approval of the city council at the city council's sole discretion. And I don't think you've had the opportunity to do that. It also requires that the determination of the project's compatibility with the surrounding area, and that's very important, obviously, to us. Then finally, there's, there are public meetings and public reviews that have not happened, and they should happen. The Planning and Zoning Board, the council itself, and with the attendant public notices that should be sent out for these meetings. That's very important, and it has to be done. There are a host of other concerns, such in 9.5. It's really important that you look at that carefully. For example, there's a requirement to review compatibility with adjacent sites. And the adjacent site is a single-family home development immediately above the proposed site. That, the other thing is density. I think Jim started to mention that. In 9.5, you have the opportunity in your review to reduce the density up to 50% to comply with this need that the community, that the transition to the adjacent community be reasonable. And I'd like to mention a couple of things in detail. We don't believe that the city can transfer density. They cannot transfer a water service unit.
30 seconds, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. The, really, I think the bottom line here is that this unit, this has to transition appropriately. That's clearly, you have the authority to do that. And we definitely don't want an eyesore there that is not in compliance with the architectural standards of the planned community. I'll give you an example, the apartment development on 89 and Willow Lake Road. So we hope you'll consider all these factors, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Earl DeCue. Earl.
Good afternoon. My name is Earl DeCue, 530 Fairgrounds. Over the past two years, I've been involved in the update of Gilgarter Neighborhood Plan and in our response to the planned expansion of the rodeo at the city-owned fairgrounds. In relation to these efforts, I attended the last general plan open house where I reviewed the plant, the proposed planned use map. My neighbors and I were very surprised and disappointed by what we saw. Their fairground zoning was changed to recreational space RS zoning. My take is that the correct processes, which seems to be consistent in the previous two talks or presentations, that the correct process for zoning changes are not being followed. The proposed land use map must show the zoning as it is today. Any change in zoning, proposed or otherwise, must go through the proper current process, public notification, and comment. Thank you.
Sue Manuel.
Good afternoon, mayor, good and council. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Sue Manuel, live at 508 Fairgrounds Avenue in Prescott for the last 66 years. Sorry. There we go. Okay. I was doing some research and asking for records from the city hall. And there was an impact study done in 2021 for the development of the proposed Master Plan for the fairgrounds. This was paid for with city tax money, but when I requested this, I was told that it was commissioned by Prescott Frontier Days as an independent study and therefore is not in the city record. Why not? If the city tax dollars were used, why is this not in the city records? In 2022, oh, that study was $12,500. Requested the scope of work and RFP for the rodeo master plan in the impact study, again, told not in the records. This was $24,000. Were either of these two items put out to bid, or did they just use their favorite? Were these items in the city council's agenda prior to them being done to be voted on for city input? Our approval, again, not available with city records. Total expenses incurred by the city for the events of PFD for the Fourth of July week that is put on by PFD, such as employee overtime, earned time off, police, fire, public works, park, and rec employees, equipment used to block the roads for the parade, fire trucks, garbage trucks, and per staff, again, they do not keep these records. So one department doesn't keep records of what their value of the money that they're giving the other department? I find that hard to believe. With, in light of the major embellishments by nonprofit organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, CCJ, and the financial collapse of Fine Arts, I'm asking for transparency within, for the city. That we, the citizens have the right to know how much these events cost. PFD makes money with their admissions to people to be in the parade, and yet we're paying $10,000 for porta-potties, we're paying $40,000 for their marketing and advertising. They need to be paying this as their own expense for their business that they're doing. I feel that every citizen of Prescott has a $66,000 in net income, and they're asking for, always with a handout, they're wanting our tax dollars. If they're making all this money, because they do have two employees that make around $100,000 a year for part-time jobs. If they have enough money to pay them $100,000 for a part-time job, they need to be paying some of their own expenses and not out of my pocket. Thank you.
That's all, mayor.
Folks, I just want to let you know that when you voted me in as your mayor, I created this call to the public. We didn't have one before. And I felt that it was important for the community to be able to bring issues to the attention of the council. But realize that this, the conditions under what your call to the public has created does not allow us to have dialogue or debate with each one of you as you bring these issues forward. So I hope you'll respect the opportunity to address the council in this limited manner. And at least it gives you an opportunity to make your case and to let us know what your primary concerns are so that we may be able to agendize an item like this at a future meeting. And I also want to emphasize the fact that expressions of support or opposition sometimes make it difficult for the community to understand what's being said. So that's why I asked for decorum here. So I hope you appreciate that. And again, for all of you that came and attended, we hear you. Thank you very much.
And you're on to the consent agenda now.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have currently three items on consent. Does any member of the council wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to pull Item C.
All right. Item C will be pulled from consent, and I'll entertain a motion on the remaining two items.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
We'll pause a minute here while the chamber gets emptied. I don't think we can go back to the, to the open call to the public options for the council at this point, can we?
What do you mean by go back?
Councilmember, Councilwoman Furrworth would like to recommend that this go to a study session.
So, Councilwoman Furrworth, if you want to send me an email with your second council member, I can get it added onto a future agenda.
Thank you, because I really, I have been pressing the request to speak buttons multiple times.
I understand that, but we don't.
And I would have liked to have asked for this with most of the public here. So I will send it forward to you, mayor. Thank you very much for entertaining that.
Send to me.
And we'll talk it.
Sent to me.
Both. I'll send it to both of you. Thank you.
And I'll support that request. All right, Councilmember Rusing, Item 8C.
Thank you. I just have a minor suggestion or a clarification on this contract. I'd like to direct your attention to the recital page, Item D, the last sentence, "with any untaken effluent returned to the city's water system at no cost." I'd like to add that so that in, it will also, I need to direct your attention under the terms to Page 7, Item 13, Topic: Method of Disposal. I would like to clarify that so that it, instead of saying, it should say that the effluent shall be returned to the city at no cost, just to clarify, have those two terms in the contract, because it's not very clear as to having that effluent returned to the city if they don't use their 400 acre feet.
City Attorney, what do you think about that?
I will say that if the motion is to make those two changes, we can do that. I will tell you, we need, we'll need to get approval from the opposing party to do so. So they haven't agreed on those two changes, but if that is the motion by council, we can make that, you can make that motion, and we can make that request from the opposing party.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead and make it.
That we approve city contract number... Oh, okay. That we approve it with the amendment.
It would be, it would be approval with the amendment, yes. And Councilwoman Furrworth, did you want to speak before the motion is made? Okay.
All right, Councilmember, Councilwoman Furrworth.
Okay. I had had dialogue yesterday, but I never did get a final response in Item 4.3, the CPI yearly adjustment. Most of our contracts that we saw through the budget was always based on a CPI of Phoenix. This one has, it is based on a CPI of the United States City Average. And so as long as we're making some other changes, I don't know why we wouldn't make this change, too, to go to what all of our recent contracts have, which is the City of Phoenix CPI. So that is my suggestion for consideration.
And if I may, or you can press it, but that change was made yesterday, and the other side agreed to that change.
Yeah. And if I, Gwen Roach, by the way, Public Works Director, if I could just make a comment about the effluent that's returned to the city. Capital Canyon can't shut their treatment plant down. So year-round, they create effluent from the raw waste water sewage that we sell to them. And so they have, for the last 24 years, 25 years, they have been sending any effluent that they make that they're not able to use back to the city's wastewater treatment plant. It's just a, it's a byproduct of how it has to work in order for the plant to continue to operate, and that has never been at any charge to the city in the past. But if you would like that language for clarification, I do not believe they would object to that, because, as I said, they've been doing it for 25 years.
They're already doing it.
They do, yes.
But I think it's important that we clarify it in this contract now, since it's going to be in force for another 20 years.
This contract is for 20 years with three 10-year renewals.
Times 10, times 10 renewals.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. I move that we approve city contract number 2025-096 with Capital Canyon Club LLC with the following modifications, where recital Paragraph D includes "at no cost." And also, under the terms, Paragraph 13, under Method of Disposal, we include the language "shall be returned to the city at no cost." Thank you.
Second.
City Attorney, is that clear?
That's clear.
That's clear. All right, good. We have a motion in second. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to the Consent Ordinance 9A.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1878. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of approximately 131 acres of real property from Arizona Eco Development, along with acceptance of donation of an additional 240 acres pursuant to a development agreement between the city and Arizona Eco Development near the Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field. And I'll let Joe address action on this item.
Yeah, council, you've, we've talked about this item a number of times in the past. However, the contract was not able to be finalized in time for you to have time to review it. So based on requests from AED and from city staff, we'd request that this be tabled until the next meeting, and we do not have an actionable item on, at this point.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. Also, Joe, could we clarify, in the ordinance language, it says 240 acres, but under Item Summary and under background, it states 270 acres, so we have a discrepancy between acreage.
Thank you. It is 270 acres, and that will be cleared up.
Thank you.
All right, so since both parties haven't agreed to the terms of the contract, we'll just have to table this and to a future meeting. Do we have a date specific for it?
The date proposed would be the next meeting, which is November 19.
Very good. Then I will make a motion to table this contract consideration to the next meeting on November 19.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda, and the first item is 10A.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a petition received by the council at the October 8, 2024 voting meeting submitted by Bonnie McMinn and Ralph Hess. So mayor and council, today you'll be receiving some information from the city manager and the city attorney. Then the petitioners will have an opportunity to address the council. Council can have discussion and then take public comment if you'd like to do so. And then there is a recommendation from staff to deny the ordinance as it stands. However, we can take direction from you today on how you would like us to handle this code section moving forward.
So our options are to approve, deny, or approve with conditions.
Correct. Although I'd say also that you have an option to continue it until another date. Under the charter, there's 60 days. Council has to act on this. So we wanted to get to council, but it's been about 30. So presumably, you could also continue it to another meeting within the 60-day period.
Very good.
Well, I'm sorry, Joe, I don't want to argue with you necessarily, but they just have to take action on it. So if they set it to a date specific for a future agenda, that would be action, and you would be within the provisions of the charter.
Right. Right. So, Mayor, if you'd like me to address the petition briefly?
Yeah, would you please, and talk about some of the potential consequences based upon how the petition was presented?
Right. So, as I mentioned, under the charter, citizens may propose a petition, the council has to take action on those items. In this case, it's a petition aimed primarily, or proposing an ordinance aimed primarily at governing leases within the city. The ordinance calls for, before the city may enter into a lease of city property with any party where that lease is more than three years or more, the city has to require certain information, primarily of the last three years of tax returns, line of credit documentation, three-year business plan, operating capital budget. And at the same time, the city must do a market value analysis to determine whether this is within market's value or not. And as an addition that was added, explain what benefits the city would get if the rent is below market value. And then, if there is a modification to city property valued at $1 million or more, the city must also require a feasibility study to include expected benefits, market demand of those improvements, the rate of return, future costs, and maintenance costs. There's also a provision in provision B that states that if any tenant modifications or improvements are made to a property, all of those conditions I just laid out apply. And then, a provision prohibiting leases of any city property to any city employee. So, our current charter does have, excuse me, one other provision, it requires a 30-day public comment period before a lease can be entered into. Under our current charter, it does have some notification requirements. The city has to publish a notice of intent to lease and publish that at least once a week for two weeks before entering it into. Obviously, that's shorter than the 30-day public comment period. I think a lot of this, these provisions make sense and is consistent with council goals has been expressed. For example, as it relates to the fair market value analysis, that is already policy set by council at a previous meeting, and we haven't had a lease since then that has needed it. But it is a policy that we do fair market value. I think that including that in the code makes a lot of sense. So, there's a lot of this that makes sense, but I don't think it's ready, and primarily, there's a few issues. One is the distinction between leases and license agreements within the city, real estate license agreements. So, the primary difference between a real estate license agreement is that it's usually shorter and they can be terminated at any point. And the tenant in a license agreement doesn't have the exclusive rights to that property like they do under a lease. My thought would be, council would want to apply some of these requirements, like the fair market value analysis, to a license agreement, just the same as it does to lease. So, we would probably make that a little bit broader. However, a license agreement wouldn't have the same, necessarily the same requirements in terms of financial history and so forth, because it's easy to terminate if the payment's missed, it can be terminated, and so the, the background information, I think, is less relevant. Another issue we have is the business plan for leases. I think that a business plan makes sense for some high-value assets that the city might have, but for, the lease has, the city has dozens, maybe hundreds of leases at the airport. It has charitable organizations throughout, the city have leases with the city. So, I think the business plan may be overly burdensome for many of our tenants, but not, like I said, for certain high-value assets, it may make sense to do that. And then, the provision B, which extends the requirements of section A to any tenant that does any tenant modifications, I think is too broad, and we want to reduce that. Tenant modifications can be as little as painting a room, and I think that would be a little burdensome. And then, I think the council needs a discussion on the prohibition on city employees leasing city property. Currently, we have, I think, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, something like six caretaker units within the city where employees live in exchange for work. I think that's a discussion the city needs to have on whether we want to do that. It also could impact future workforce housing options as well. We have two workforce housing units where we have city employees living, and this would prohibit that. So, I think that would be something to remove or reconsider. And so, at this point, as we mentioned, we would request a denial, but direction, either here or set it for a date specific where we can further discuss direction from council on how you'd like this ordinance to look.
Well, I can certainly see how broadly impactful this petition request exists right now. Can you, do you have any idea how many current leases that we have in place would be impacted by adoption of this petition?
I don't know, Dawn, if you do. I know that the airport has, like I said, dozens to hundreds, and I can think of about 20 others within the city, just off the top of my head, so a lot. I don't have a specific answer.
City Manager, do you have a comment on that?
I don't have a specific number, but like Joe, it's, it's over 100. It's well over 100.
Over 100 would be impacted by this. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, my question, and maybe this is, is for Dawn too, but I guess my biggest concern in reading this ordinance right now is that we might have, and I think you've started to lay this out a little bit, Joe, but unintended consequences that we're not thinking about. And I wonder if it may be more appropriate to have a larger discussion around this and maybe a study session, as opposed to just, like, I understand, I think it was great that the petitioners brought this to our attention, and it's probably worth looking at, but I'd like to see a variety of options, because I think there's, that there's a number of provisions here that have not, maybe even just two distinct options, but might be three or four even. So, I wonder if you could weigh in on that, if either you or the city manager could weigh in on that a little bit? Yeah, I can jump in for a second. First of all, just to say that I agree with what Joe laid out earlier. And I think one of the other things that we're thinking about is the burden on staff. If we need to go do, you know, two or three studies to issue a lease, we're talking about a lot of time, a lot of capacity that's, that's filled up with this, and something that we might actually need to hire employees just to meet what's, what's put here. But the intention of, let's, you know, let's make sure things are done transparently, let's make sure we're following good business practices, let's make sure we're doing those kinds of things, I think is something that we can get to, something we can definitely talk about in terms of a policy. It would help if, as Joe has also said, and as you've alluded to, if we were to have a conversation around, like, what are the core principles that council wants to make sure that we're, we're following, and then for staff to go and take that and figure out, what does the policy actually look like, and then bring something back, I think would be a process that would help us to get something that meets the intent of this petition, but without, maybe we can mitigate some of the, the issues that, that we're concerned about. Thank you, that makes a lot of sense to me.
And if I may, I did have a meeting yesterday with the petitioners, Ralph Hess and Bonnie McMinn, I don't know if they're here, I assume. And I won't say that they necessarily agree with pushing it, but I think they were amenable to that, but their main concern is expressed, and they're here, then they can speak for themselves, was that we kind of set it off and then forget about it. And so, we can pick a date certain, and I know that the next meetings are available, any voting meeting you can do, study, next available study session, I believe, is in February, so.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I was reading this in my studying, and many of these requests are just basic good business. I'm a person that has a lot of rentals, I've had them for 25, 30 years, and I think the more you can clarify in a lease, the better off you are. I would like to see this, and I'd like to make some suggestions on enhancing this ordinance. For example, I would like to have a little clearer understanding of the ongoing maintenance required for some of these properties, and will there be a requirement for some maintenance? I'd like to have a little more discussion and add something there about, you know, once they've been given notice to terminate, give them a 30 to 60 day, we'd have to agree on that. When do they have to be out? There was no provision for that. I would like to also maybe do some additional provisions in there for some nonprofits, because there may be a time where we want to give a nonprofit a hand up. The other thing was, put something in there as a possibility for an incentive, and I'm just going to give you an example, if we, and maybe we don't own this, but let's say we own a, you know, a strip mall, and we have two empty office buildings, who's responsible for the build-outs? And do we want to incentivize the new business? Maybe we give them a break on something for three months to incentivize them to come in. I'd like to have a little bit more in-depth thought about what should and should not be in that. But again, as I said, overall, I think it's just good business practice, most of this stuff. Thank you.
And if I may, as it relates to kind of incentives and, and breaks to charitable organizations, we do that, and this doesn't prevent us from doing that. It adds some requirements for financial background information, but doesn't necessarily change that. And so, the city might have a charitable organization, like we have a lease with Boys and Girls Club, where we get some certain amount, but we give a break because of the public benefit. But the public benefit, the analysis between the gap between public benefit and what the lease is, and the fair market value, that's an analysis we have to, I think, as a city do better, having that discussion at council. Meaning, we can give a break, but we should have a discussion of why we give that break.
Well, would it be possible, then, to go ahead and have a study session on this and discuss all these different options?
I think it makes sense, yes.
Okay. You know, the one thing about this ordinance too, that you have to remember, at least for me, now being on city council, an ordinance like this does, goes a long way to protect the accountability to everybody in the city about the properties, and being conscientious with these properties, and making sure we're doing the best with taxpayer dollars. So, I'm not opposed to this, but I think it's an opportunity to really enhance this.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the concerned citizens that brought this issue to our attention, and I look upon this as more of a housekeeping chore, because we do kind of have a hodgepodge of leases, and we need to formalize these leases. You know, we have city employees living on city property, we don't, I haven't seen a lease, we don't know what's going on with that. We have rodeo employees living on rodeo property. We have the, the airport, which is, they're leases, you know, they're under the umbrella of the FAA, you know, it'd probably be a good idea to just exclude the airport and any Emory Riddle leases. You know, we have the Arizona revised statutes, you know, they govern tenants, landowner leases. So, I would like to say that we need to require, make sure we have proof of insurance when we lease space in our buildings to entities, because these entities are open to fraud, and make sure that there's a fraud rider on these, make sure everyone can show proof of insurance every year, and make sure they have director, if they have a board, make sure they have director and officers' insurance too. So, in summary, I think this is a good thing, we need to discuss this more, do more research, and bring it back at a, at a later time, sooner better than later. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to rehash what everybody said, because I think it's been said well, but the one thought that occurred to me is that anytime we adopt an ordinance or policies, they should be written by staff and not by citizens. And, and I say that just because this really does need a thorough review. And I really appreciate Bonnie and Ralph bringing this to our attention, I think it's great, and I think we're going to have a great product when we get done with this whole review process, because we're going to get legal input and staff input and citizen input. And I think we're on the right, headed in the right direction to have a study session and get the staff behind this and get it written by staff. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. I too agree with a lot of what my peers have said up and down the line here. I do think it's really important, as we get in any business arrangement, that we understand the financials of the organizations, and I understand for-profit versus not-for-profit, their financials might be different, and I don't want to put undue stress on creating things that, you know, nonprofits, for example, don't have to meet. But most of the good ones have pretty good financials, they have good boards, and they're on top of things. So, I really liked that level of transparency, because I, I really do believe that we, we the council, and we, the taxpayers, should be well aware of both the annual economic benefits and the annual economic costs or investments that city taxpayer money is being provided to for both profit and nonprofit. And so, I do think this is going to help us tighten things up, and I think we need to take the time to do this thoroughly and right, versus race to get something done.
Councilman Gamboge.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're getting down into weeds here. There seems to be consensus that there's elements of this that are a good idea, and it needs to be pursued further by staff and maybe a study session. Are we going to hear from the applicant?
Yeah, and we have a number of public comment forms too.
Okay, so I would, let's hear from the applicant and let's make a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to just make a comment here, that when we had those series of charter amendments on the last election, one of those charter amendments was designed to deal with the option of a lease purchase. Prior to that, leasing of city property was pretty much at the sole discretion of the city manager. Any sale of city property had to be publicized, and we had to get the highest bid, et cetera. But lease purchase options weren't really considered, and the condition under which the Hilton Garden Inn was leased with an option to purchase became somewhat of a controversial condition. So, having that charter amendment kind of solved that dilemma, but I think at this point, as the city continues to grow, and as we continue to have more dynamic economic development opportunities, we're going to have more significant leasing options, and I think so many of the recommendations coming out of this petition are very valuable. But I agree, I think it's so broad that we do, do need to spend some time analyzing how best to maybe put together a leasing policy, and how leases, which leases have to be looked at in detail, which ones are a little more common, which ones can be maybe excluded, because they might have a condition with FAA requirements, like some of the hangar leases out at the airport, et cetera. So, it certainly needs to be looked at in a lot more detail. With that said, we'll take, see, we'll take a public comment now.
Oh, Mayor, would you like to hear from the petitioners and then to public comment?
Well, they would be the first on the list, in my view. Ralph Hess, City of Prescott.
That's where I live. And Bonnie McMinn. Actually, I, we would prefer to wait to hear public comment until we make our comments, so that we can address all of the concerns that are expressed not only by council, but by the public, if that pleases the council.
Works for me.
Okay. So, the first comment card I have is from Sue Manuel.
You get to see me twice today, what can I say? Sue Manuel, 508 Fairgrounds Avenue. As a landlord myself, I do a thorough check, I make sure that they can pay their rent when they say they're going to pay their rent, and I get three years of taxes from them and/or from their secondary signers, if they're an Emory Riddle student, to make sure that I am covered. So, I think the city should at least do that, and then if they want to outbuild or build other buildings on the land, that it goes through the landlord, not just the tenant trying to do it on their own, and then just like shoving it down the landlord's throat. They need to be able to prove that they can afford to do what they want to do on the land, and then it's feasible and is beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Earl DeKe.
Earl DeKe, 530 Fairgrounds, and I appreciate everything that the council people have mentioned, and I think it's important that an ordinance such as this is, should be passed with further work. And with that, a few weeks ago, in particular, I went, I attended United Ways Organization's training for nonprofit organizations, which is relevant to this, this topic. A big reason for this training was to prevent criminal acts in nonprofits that recently occurred with several nonprofits. They highlighted the fiduciary responsibilities of boards of directors that they have to their donors, and the monies of their donors, and, and the management of the executive directors. In addition, they highlighted the failing of Prescott Center itself for the arts, and how their board of director failed their fiduciary duty and made several bad loan decisions. They... decisions that resulted in the failing of that organization. I'm concerned that a particular city, the C, the PFD, Prescott Frontier Days, and nonprofit organizations could be misusing public funds and the property and making bad decisions that can lead to its failure. And I think that this ordinance would help prevent that. One recent bad decision was the president of the board moving her business, not our first rodeo from downtown commercial space with high foot traffic to one with little, to no foot traffic at the fairgrounds. Although the city has had, has an order to cease and desist, this event is evidence that their board of directors' president is making bad business decisions and is not capable of carrying out fiduciary responsibilities to their major donor, us, the taxpayers. The neighborhood doesn't want to see the rodeo fail. However, the neighborhood's findings through public records requests are revealing potential misappropriation of city money and improper use of the property. We are concerned that bad decisions may be happening that could cause it to fail and would put the city at financial risk. Therefore, this ordinance will provide the city a process and enable us to obtain third-party financial audits of one of its biggest LCs, that's the rodeo. And we need a city that will also help provide a city steering committee to help oversee the use of large value assets such as the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and council, I appreciate that it looks like we're going to have a study session on this, and I think it's necessary. And I generally support the proposal. And I appreciate the city attorney going in depth and looking at the pros and cons. And I just wanted to mention a little bit that when it comes back to a study session, maybe we can get into the weeds a little bit, specifically about the appraisal. And in the amended proposal was a additional request that the appraisal covers any non-monetary consideration or benefits provided by the city or the LC. And I would suggest that that be included. But what needs to be looked at is what is reasonably feasible to appraise. Now, there may be some non-monetary benefits that an appraisal could come up with a range of value, not necessarily have to pin down a specific value, but can come down with a range. For instance, the city's providing 65 nights of hotel rooms in its contract to the Whiskey Epic Rides, which operates the whiskey off-road bike race. That 65 nights could be appraised approximately. However, there may be some other non-monetary benefits that may be more difficult to appraise. And if a range could be developed, that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Rex Henshaw.
My name is Rex Henshaw. I'm the vice president of Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated. There's a couple of things that I hadn't planned on speaking to here, but I will now. And that was brought up just a moment ago about our president making bad financial decisions and the moving of the store to the fairgrounds or to the rodeo grounds. The store merchandise was moved to that location to store it while the new location and the new lease was being negotiated and signed for the new location. It's not going to be a permanent store, never was intended to be a permanent store, and it would be, the present move-in date to the new location downtown, again, is December 1st. So I'd just like you to know that. What I was going to talk about is, I don't need to tell you about the millions of dollars in economic impact that this rodeo brings into this community each and every year. This rodeo, being the world's oldest rodeo, is part of the history and heritage and legacy of this community. It's ingrained within this community. It's part of who we are and what we are and our values. But what you might not know is that because of the leadership of our, and vision of our general manager, Mr. Jim Dewey Brown, our facility has become the incubator for future athletes of the sport of rodeo. We have mutton busting that goes on. Anyone that's been to the rodeo season knows, five- to six-year-olds. We have junior rodeos. We have high school rodeos. We're going to have college rodeos. And we have amateur events throughout the year. We are not, we are now not only the home of the world's oldest rodeo, we are becoming the home of the future of rodeo. I believe that that is a heritage that is worth protecting and preserving. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, very good. I think we have a pretty good idea of what kind of action we want to take today. And that is to listen to the petitioners and then, and then decide exactly what action we will be taking today.
Do we not sell past the close? Sorry about that. I guess I'll go first. Ladies first. Bonnie McMinn, thank you very much for your consideration today. We, I believe that the entire council and the staff present on the dais understands the spirit with which this was brought, because this has been an issue. And Mayor, you duly appointed Mr. Hess and myself to the city charter committee, and this was one of the things that we wanted to address, and we were able to get a lot done. But this was one of those things that we were not able to finish. So we do really appreciate the advice of Mr. Young. We met with him yesterday, and we had a very good conversation, and I really appreciate the comments made from the dais today. So I'm very interested in seeing this move forward. It doesn't have to be speedy, but we want to make sure that it happens. But I do want to make a point between policy and ordinance, because policies are great, and I think Mr. Kimball mentioned policy, but ordinances are, you know, better, ink to the paper, enforceable. And so that's really what we're looking to do. And of course, the differences between commercial and non-commercial, that's obviously important for us as well. So I think there's a lot of things that have been brought up, really good stuff, and I really do appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Mayor and council, Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. I want to reiterate what Bonnie's just said. I appreciate all of the comments that council has made. I especially appreciate Mr. Young having met with us yesterday. It was very informative. We got a lot of good ideas out of it. I appreciate the comments that the public have made. I just want to touch on a couple of things. The motivation for this was recognizing that the city council is the stewards of the city-owned property. And as stewards of the property, it's important that the city get true value for the assets that it, for which it is the steward. And so that was the motivation. And the people who put this, there are several of us who put input into this ordinance, and all of us have different types of expertise. And I recognize that, well, I recognize, based on my area of expertise, which is the law, or it used to be anyway, is that we knew that, I knew, that you're going to go to your city attorney to determine what kind of city code provision you're going to have. You're not going to wait for a citizen to tell you what your city code should be. But personally, I think, contrary to what I've heard today, I don't think this ordinance or this proposed city code provision is overly broad. One thing is, it's not intended to address what the provisions of individual leases will be. If you look at this closely, we're only intending to ask you to make sure that before you enter into a lease agreement, you have all the information that you need to have to know that you have a viable tenant. That's the purpose of this. Once you have that information, if the city wants to enter an unconstitutional lease that doesn't comply with the gift clause, this code would not prevent that. It would only provide us with the information to know what we want to do if you do that. So how we want to react to it. I think that was primarily the only thing I wanted to add. I do want to again, again, express my appreciation for your seriousness in looking at this and the help that Mr. Young has provided. I do have one disagreement, though, with what Madam Clerk had indicated as to what would constitute a action by this council. Then against, once again, you're going to look to your city attorney, not to me, as to what that will be. But my suggestion, my interpretation of what an action would be under the city charter, you have to vote, either up or down, or vote to approve a modification. And that has to be done within 60 days. One thing I propose, from what I've heard from council, if you want, if you want to push this off, fine. And I think there's a lot of good ideas that we've heard today that would make this proposed code provision an improved code provision. So the 60th day, according to my calculation, would be December 7th. That would be the time by which you would have to act. That's a Saturday. So, and I think, I think I mentioned this with Bonnie, but we would agree to extend the 60-day period, as long as the council agreed to that, to December 10th, which I looked at the portal, and apparently the one meeting you're going to have in December is December 10th. So we would not, or we would agree to put off the requirement to act upon this particular petition until December 10th, which would give you the opportunity to have staff and your city attorney propose language that would be more acceptable to staff and council. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make a few comments as a preamble before I make a motion. May I do that?
You can go ahead and make your comments. I'm not sure if we're ready for a motion, but go ahead.
I think what the applicants have presented, at its core, represents a good idea. I think it would behoove us for the applicants to get together city staff and address some of the issues that you've heard today, especially scope, and then come back as a study session. So with that as a preamble, if there's no other comments, I'm ready for a motion.
There are some other comments here. We got Councilman Gamb, Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask the city attorney to clarify what action looks like today, because that's a big question I have, is, as much as I appreciate Ralph's expertise as a lawyer, you're the only one that we're paying. So I'd love to hear what your thoughts are.
Right. You get a little bit of benefit for letting me whether I'm right or wrong. I will say that action's not defined, but I tend to agree that it would be a vote up or down, or approval of modifications. I think that, in effect, if you want a study session and it's in February, it makes more sense to deny and then have that discussion fresh. If you want to have the discussion in December, take the petition.
So just to clarify, though, you're saying a vote up or down on the petition itself?
Correct.
Okay.
That doesn't stop the discussion, but it complies with your responsibility to take action.
I appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
I just, I have another question about action. How about if, would it be possible to postpone it? And then for a study session at a later date, if you have the date available?
I don't think postponing the action makes sense. I think if you want to have the study session, you just deny the petition. It doesn't stop your discussion. It doesn't stop the petition from being relevant to your discussions, but it complies with your charter requirements, and then we have that discussion and move forward.
Yeah, I think we're at the point where to either vote up or down. Most likely would be to deny with a recommendation that a study session be made date-specific as early as practical in February, and that way we could take all the issues and draft it. Right?
And I, the clerk just said February 25th is the available date.
Ralph, you got another comment?
Yeah, just along the lines of what you're discussing now, between December 10th, which was the date that we said we would agree to extend it, there's going, in between that time, you're going to have a meeting on November 19th. So you could have a study session on that. I don't know if that would give staff enough time to develop the language, but that's an option.
With all due respect, Mr. Hess, we have study session items that are scheduled through February, which is why the February 25th date has been discussed.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't picked arbitrarily off the calendar. It's just that we already have study session topics already scheduled, and the people involved in them are already working on the presentations. So we're pretty much obligated to keep our study session topics the way they've scheduled it. But even if we did it on December 10th, trying to debate all the details of what this would, what would be needed here, I think would be just unlikely to be able to come up with a really quality solution.
Yeah. No, I understand that. I was just offering that as an idea. I wasn't suggesting to replace something that's on the November 19th study session, just perhaps add this to it, so.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. If we move to deny today, can we ask for an effort to continue? And so when we get to the study session, we actually have a couple of options or proposals or elements flushed out, and we actually have something worth studying. Could we do that as part of the motion?
You can. And I think that direction is important. And I will say this. Staff considered kind of drafting a motion or this ordinance in a way that we thought would be, I guess, a little bit more livable. And I don't think it's that far off. But we didn't, because we wanted to hear council direction. So we could create a document based on what the discussions here have been and bring it to you to discuss at that study session, or depending on your direction, we just wait to have that, hear that discussion, and then draft it up.
And the reason I asked for work to continue is because I do think certain things that we've been talking about today, like what's reasonable to be asking for from financial records. You know, those things, I think, worth bouncing off of some nonprofits and, you know, gathering some information, so we're not shooting, you know, from the hip. So since we have from now till February 25th, I would think we could come with something really almost baked. And then all we have to do is put the icing on and call it a day on February 25th. So that's what I'm looking for as part of the motion. Who's ever making a motion here on the dais?
Councilman Montoya.
Real quick, I just want to echo what Lois had to say. I think, I think that makes sense. I don't want the effort to stop. As much as Joe is looking for direction, I think there's consensus to continue working in the process so that we have options in front of us in February.
Well, I'd be more than willing to make the motion. I think the motion should be that we deny the petition received by the council on October 8, submitted by Bonnie McMinn and Ralph Hess, with the condition that a recommendation for a study session be conducted on February 25, and directing staff to work on providing as much in the weeds detail as we can at that time, so that we can deliberate on it, and then eventually come together with a policy and a, possibly a code amendment that would be more enforceable as this condition of leases is enacted by the council. So that's a pretty darn long motion, isn't it?
I summarized it. Would you like to hear it?
And may I ask a question? Is that one or two motions?
I think it's one.
It's one. So I have motion to deny petition received October 8, with condition that a study session be conducted February 25, 2025, and directing staff to work on details related to this petition for discussion at that time, for council determination on a policy and ordinance or code amendment.
I'll second it.
City clerk? I do. So we have a motion in a second? Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you.
Next item is item 10B.
It is a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1907, revising the city's art donation policy. So mayor and council directed staff at previous meeting to take a look at the city's art donation policy, which was adopted in 2015. Since that time, the criteria and guidelines for donations of artwork to the city have been followed in accordance with that resolution. However, there were a number of items within that policy, primarily consideration of a public comment period, some revisions to the specificity of the language, installation costs, determinations on location and placement of donated artwork, et cetera, that the council wanted staff to take a look at. So myself and Joe Young spent some time reviewing the policy as it stands today. I also put out some feelers to some of our other municipalities within the city, or within the state of Arizona, rather, to find out what other cities are doing as it relates to art donation policies. So there are only two cities within the state of Arizona that have art donation policies in place. I heard back from a total of 14 jurisdictions on this topic, and only two of them have art donation policies. One of those policies is actually not technically an art donation policy, but it is an art policy, and it pertains to a requirement by corporations and businesses that are going to come in and relocate to the area that they have an art component associated with their development, which I thought was actually a pretty cool program. But other cities typically do not accept art donations. And that's not to say that the city of Prescott should not, but I did want the council to have an idea of what some of our neighboring jurisdictions are doing as it relates to this topic. So as I mentioned, Joseph Young and I worked on revisions to the policy. We did incorporate a 60-day public comment period that would come in between the recommendation from the Civic Enhancement Committee and when you all review their recommendation. We also stated very explicitly within the policy that the determination would have to include whether or not the art was going to be donated and where it would be placed. If there is no place for the art to be located, then the art donation would not be accepted. We also included language related to installation costs, which would come from the donator. And we also included some specificity related to the council making the sole and final determination on whether or not an art donation is accepted, and that that art is in keeping with the other art that has already been accepted by the city, and with the look and feel of the city as a whole. With that all in mind, Joe and I are happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
So let me get this right. As a member of the statewide City Clerks Association, we have 91 cities and towns in the state, and I think there's additional members in counties. Is that well? Is that correct?
That's correct. The City Clerk Association contains members that are from jurisdictions like ours, so incorporated cities and towns, also special districts, so fire, school districts, things of that nature, and county as well. And we have about 245 members in total.
So out of 245 members, 14 responded. Two have art policies or art donation, maybe one of the two has a donation policy, the other one just has an art policy?
Correct.
That's a very, very, very small percentage. So that leaves us in our current condition to decide whether we eliminate, or modify, or maintain the art donation policy we currently have established. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would like to point out that Prescott is very passionate about its art and its culture. And to compare us to someplace like, I don't know, Ashfork, or, I don't know, Alpine or something that may not have an art policy, I just don't think it's very fair. This is something that I feel has been in place already. There was a committee, Art in Public Places, where I was the council liaison, and it was a huge committee. It was very passionate. It was very, they were very educated, and I think if we're going to continue to be a tourist destination, this is something that is very important and very unique to our community. So I would certainly not support eliminating the art policy, but I do support amending it, to strengthen it and clarify loopholes in gray areas, because we had a recent donation that didn't go very well because we were unsure, we had too many questions. And one element that the city clerk failed to mention that's very important is this new art policy has a 60-day public comment period. And I think that's very important, that before we accept any art, we get the public's input so that we don't install something, and then the public comes back and says it wasn't appropriate. So I think it's very important that we get public input and that we have some parameters as far as who pays for the installation. And I think this is a very, a very good policy, and I think it's important that we have it. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really sure where I'm going to go with all these comments, but I've read the new policy, and I've thought about how the city handled art in public places previously. And I think we have a failure in the sense that when we consolidated three of the boards, committees, and commissions into one, creating the Civic Enhancement Committee, we lost members of this new committee don't have a background and a knowledge of art. And they really aren't effective at evaluating what an art donation, whether it's acceptable or whether it's appropriate. You know, on page one of this policy, it says, regardless of the method of acquisition, certain fundamental criteria will be universally applied to any work of art under consideration, including the following points. And the very first point is artistic merit. Well, that is very subjective. I think as a council, when we were discussing the previous art donation, to be honest with you, and Barbara, please don't be offended, to be honest with you, I don't think any of us liked it. It was very modern art that just didn't really fit in with the Prescott art.
We're artists.
And, and as a council member, I think I'm speaking for many of the other council members, a lot of us really had some heartburn with the art that was being donated, and then we ended up sending it back, rejecting the donation. Art is very subjective. And I look at this policy, and one of my thoughts is, maybe we need to reinstate an Art in Public Places Committee, and not have it lumped in with Civic Enhancement, and have people that serve on that committee that have a background in art, because none of the current members of the Civic Enhancement Committee, in my opinion, maybe, Sarah, you can clarify it.
One of our members was on Art in Public Places, and we made sure to
One?
Keep at least one member that had experience from the prior boards on that committee.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, Sarah. I appreciate it, because I don't want to speak inappropriately or out of tune, out of line. But I still have a lot of questions about this policy. I underlined and highlighted a lot of things in this newly revised policy, and I'm still having a problem with it. So those are my comments at this point. Maybe more later.
Well, I agree that so many items that are art are so subjective. Looking at different public art installations throughout the country, some of them are extremely controversial, and, you know, art's in the eye of the beholder. So being able to try to apply some type of measurable criteria to whether a piece of art fits in with the culture and the legacy and the history of our town, makes it very difficult to make a decision on accepting it and where it should be placed, and who pays the bill to identify a location, pays the cost for installation. It's, that's probably a good reason why there's only one city or town in the whole state that is willing to have such a policy. So I think it has to be balanced over what impact it has at the community at large versus someone's definition of what a quality piece of work of art is, and how it's going to be identified, located, the cost for installation, all those other conditions. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify something. I actually really do like modern art. Spent many, many years in the design industry, but there's a part of this that I think a lot of people just accidentally found out, is it's not just receiving the art. And I'm going to read real quick for the public in this art donation policy, if nobody has read it, but there's a few, just a couple of
What page are you at, so we can follow along?
First one, page one. It says the guidelines, number one, should be of the highest quality. Number two, enhances the aesthetic character of the community's public spaces. Number three, advances the public understanding of art. Number four, meets with the overall feel and theme of the city. And number five, this is probably the most important one, because you can receive all the art you want, but unless you have the accurate place to display that art, you don't do the art any justice, and you don't do the community any art, any justice. So this is the last one, very important. Does not place an undue burden on the city for the artwork's maintenance, security, or public safety. So, you know, when we, we accept a piece of art, or we consider, I think it's got to be very, very important for whoever is making that decision to understand almost the bigger part of it. How do you secure an accurate area for whatever that art is? And then you have to analyze, what is it going to take? We received pictures of three potential sites. One of them was just a dirt field, weeds and a dirt field out by the, you know, peavine trail. Well, in my mind, as a designer and a builder, I'm looking at the hardscaping. That could be $100,000 worth of hardscaping to make that modern art shine, you know? So those are very important parts. I think that we've got to make sure that we have the ability to turn stuff away if it doesn't fit with these five criteria, and make sure, you know, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, and everybody's right. Art is very, very subjective, so, but understanding the other big components of that as a person who is concerned about taxpayer dollars. So I'm just going to weigh out, I like the policy, I think we need these policies, but we also have to have an understanding that we can turn art away, and we can do it safely. Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question to Eric's kind of train of thought on this is, I'm curious how many art donations we've had over the past few years. Like, I mean, in my mind, I think since I've been on council, there's been two or three, maybe murals, that I'm recalling. I know there was some concern over the murals of the 19 that sit on the wall on the Chamber of Commerce building, but I guess I'm curious how, because I know that the effort to dissolve the Arts in Public Places Committee was a consolidation effort, because we do have a lot of boards and commissions. And so I guess, I guess my thought is, how often is the issue of art in public places coming forward to the city? And I'm thinking of this from another taxpayer perspective, which is staff time, which, whenever I think of staff time, what that ultimately means to me is, just because people are being paid, it's not free. It's time that takes away from other tasks that they could be doing. And that's, I know these committees have, typically have to have a city staff liaison that's keeping meeting minutes and things like that. So I don't know if anyone, I'm looking down to the three professionals at the end there.
I'll just say, I remember five in the last two years, off the top of my head.
Five? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going back and looking at meetings that Art in Public Places conducted over the last decade. There's a year where they met once, there's a year where they met twice, there's a year where they met four times. And I don't know the specific number of art donations over the last decade. I would say, I believe it's somewhere between four and five. The murals that you alluded to, there were a couple of sculptures.
Sure.
So it's not something that's happening, and that was one of the reasons why, as you mentioned, the consolidation of the boards and commissions, Art in Public Places was one where there was a lot of overlap.
Right.
So there's overlap, was overlap, rather, between Art in Public Places and Parks and Recreation, because of the placement of the art, for example. Facilities and Parks and Recreation was involved in that process. So we took boards and commissions that were meeting very infrequently, but where there was overlap, so that we could consolidate them into one that had more consistent meeting schedules. And as I said, we did try to maintain at least one or two members on the current board from one or multiple of the previous boards.
I appreciate that clarity. I guess, kind of what I'm driving at a little bit is, I worry, because I've experienced this in the three years that I've been on council, is that sometime in the future, you know, somebody's going to be sitting in my chair, and they're going to be like, what is this, like, there are components of this policy, because it's not a small policy, and there are components of these policy that they may look at and they say, why do we have this consideration? Because it may not be applicable to what the future of Prescott looks like in, you know, five or 10 years even. So, and I'm not, I mean, I, I'm happy to move forward with this policy. I don't necessarily see major adjustments that need to be made to it, but I just, I worry that, that if we get too much into the weeds, to borrow a turn of phrase from Councilman Gamboge, that we might be micromanaging the process too much.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would like to bring up our very famous local artist, Bill Nebiker, and he has donated, he has created several wonderful bronze statues that have been donated to us for the roundabouts. And it is, it's been wonderful to enhance the community, and also we received the Ernest A. Love statue, which I believe was a donation for our airport. So I think we need to acknowledge that art donation does have a very important part in this community, and just because in this community, and just because other cities don't have a policy doesn't mean that they're not accepting art at all. And so just because you haven't, don't have a policy, you may be accepting art, and maybe you're just not doing a very good job, you know, vetting it, you know, like most art shows have, are called juried. So to me, this is a way to jury the art, so that you get good quality art that enhances the community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, Sarah. On the Civic Enhancement Committee, is Parks and Recs and Facilities always a member of that committee? Because I didn't see them named in the process when it came to selection, site selection and maintenance. So I just wanted to make sure they were integrated somehow.
Yeah, so we, my office functions as the staff liaison for that committee, and so we ensure that if there is a proposed donation, we would involve all of the, any of the departments so that would be involved in that. So Facilities, Parks and Rec, and the Parks and Recreation Department does come in to those meetings and provides a department update each quarter as well.
Okay, very good.
All right, I think we're at the point where we'll entertain a public comment.
Brenda Terrace.
I would prefer that my colleague go first.
And let me remind you that public comment during an agenda heist item is three minutes. Okay?
Well, unfortunately, I had something, I had something that I felt was very important to say to you about this policy, but I feel like I have to take at least one of my three minutes to let you know that the Civic Enhancement Committee spent months on the donations that are being, I think, misunderstood. And one of, one of the things I think was not provided to the city council on the day that I had COVID and couldn't provide it, is that those sculptors had agreed to install them at no cost to the city, provide funds for, provide a fund for repair and maintenance, and they had agreed to mitigate all of the safety concerns that, all of which came up before the committee and which were addressed at those meetings. Unfortunately, nobody here got that information, and I wasn't here due to COVID to give it to you. So I'm really sad that that happened, and I felt like I needed to let you know that they had addressed that and worked very hard on the location, which is not downtown, and not in a floodplain. So that said, why is public art important? And I'm going to read a quote from Oro Valley, from Oro Valley, and it is, "Public art instills meaning, a greater sense of identity, understandings of where we live, work, and visit, creating memorable experiences for all. It can help communities thrive, and has been found to provide a positive impact on communities by supporting economic growth and sustainability, attachment and cultural identity, and artists as contributors provide cultural understanding." One of the other things that Oro Valley recognized is, "The term 'public art' may conjure images of historic bronze statues of a soldier on horseback in a park." Today, public art can take a wide range of forms, sizes, and scales, and I think that that is taken into consideration in both the old and the new policy, that we have a diversity, we have a diverse city now. We're not all-
You have another 30 seconds.
Thank you. I think I haven't been talking that long, but that's fine. What I would like to know, would tell you, is that Sedona, which has probably hundreds of thousands of tourist dollars going up there to see their art, is less than 10,000 people, and has less stringent requirements than we do. And that's probably why they get so many tourists there looking at their diverse art. I would hope, as a, as a conclusion, that we would treat our artists better here than they're treated in places like Phoenix or Sedona. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes? Sorry, did somebody call my name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda Terrace.
Brenda Terrace, I own a marketing consulting firm here in Prescott, where I've been a resident for about eight years. In another life, I was executive director of an organization called Sarasota Season of Sculpture, and we brought monumental sculptures to the Bayfront in Sarasota in a biennial exhibition. We were a separate nonprofit than the city. However, we worked hand in hand with the city on security, parking, lighting, pick something. We knew everybody at the city, and they worked with us legitimately to make this happen. There's two issues here. One is, do you accept this art? That's one issue. The second is, what role is public art going to play in Prescott? We are at a wonderful place. We have an opportunity. You can get tourists here who will love to stay in hotels and come and visit Prescott and just, just for the art. It happens all over. I love the idea that there is a city that asks for a small percentage of, from builders to give back to public art. It's a wonderful way to have a wonderful art environment in Prescott. So really, it's up to you. I think that having a separate art organization within the city is, is a good idea, and no one will ever agree on public art, I assure you. So you might as well roll with it and get a hold of what the process is going to be now. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilwoman Forworth.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I forgot to withdraw my request.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council liaison to the Civic Enhancement Committee, I have found myself frustrated as I've sat in those meetings because of the lack of participation of the board members. I feel like a presentation is made, and they ask if they have any questions, and with the exception of one person that's serving on the committee, nobody raises a question, nobody makes a comment. And I know that you said they've worked really, really hard. I realize they went down and they looked at the proposed installation site, but I'm talking about the actual committee meeting in this chamber where I am present, and the board members are not participating. They're, they're present, but there's, with the exception of one person, a gentleman, nobody is making comments or getting involved in these decisions, and I feel like there's just not a lot of participation in that, and I, and that's my perception of the meetings, that they just really aren't, I'm talking.
Ma'am, you haven't been recognized.
We're getting a little off topic here, Councilwoman Moore. So we're just going to be considering the art donation policy on this item.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I think we're ready for a motion. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1907 and update the city's art donation policy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt this policy with the provisions as presented. Please vote. We'll move on to item, what is it, 10C?
Yes. Approval of multiple contracts for the Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station Tank and Pipeline Project as follows. City Contract Number 2025-081 with Technology Construction, Inc., and City Contract Number 2018-219A10, an amendment to City Contract Number 2018-219 with Brown and Caldwell for Post Design Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's been a while. Tim Sherwood, Capitol Program-
Well, I can see half your department here is with ties on.
Yeah.
So I have a feeling this is going to be a pretty big ask.
It's one of our bigger ones in a while. So this is for the Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station Tank and Pipeline Project. The project is located on a city-owned parcel, as indicated on the map, west of Willow Creek Road, just a little bit north of Douglas Drive. The project was identified in the city's 2018 water model and updated in 2023. The pump station and tanks provide water to city Pressure Zones 40 and 41. The Mingus Pump Station that's located nearest to Willow Creek Road, it was constructed in the 40s. It's the city's oldest in-service pump station currently. The project includes removal of two existing 200,000-gallon tanks that are on top of the hill. If you've ridden around Willow Creek Road, you're probably familiar with the, the cell towers and the two water tanks that are up there. It'll replace the two tanks that are up there with a single 750,000-gallon tank. The existing pump station will be completely rebuilt with replacing the existing 500-gallon per minute capable pump station with a 2,250-gallon per minute pump station, and upsizing the pipeline to 12 inches between the pump station, the new tanks, as well as upsizing the main to, on Douglas to Northside Drive, connecting to Zone Zero, which is our crosstown connection. The project was advertised on August 11th and 18th of 2024. We received two bids on September 19th. Public Works is recommending a war of the low bid to Technology Construction of Prescott in the amount of $10,147,605.50. The estimate for the project was $10,605,813.50. Staff has received written confirmation of bid from Technology Construction. Verification of their bonding references, past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for the project, and this item is also to approve a contract amendment with Brown and Caldwell for post-design construction engineering services in the amount of $559,546. Funding for the project is budgeted in FY25 from the Water Fund. The city has applied for a low-interest loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, or WIFA. Any debt issued will be repaid from water user rates. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I'm not personally familiar with Technology Construction. Have we used them in the past as a city?
Yes, sir.
What projects have they done?
So they did the Zone 5676 Pump Station, which is the one at the corner of Heather Heights and Highway 69, right by the casino. They also did a section of the Zone 56 16-inch water main in, between Lowe's and U-Haul for us, is the first phase of that project. They also did SunDog Trunk Main C1, which was the project on Miller Valley Road before the apartments that went in next to McDonald's. They did that first section of, of that trunk main project, as well as a very complicated project, our Zone 2427. We actually boarded 12-inch water main up an easement for approximately 800 feet, and they performed that project.
Great, thank you. And the construction of that tower or tank, will it be similar to the two new tanks that we did out by Deepwell, or is it what?
No, this will be a welded steel above ground tank.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's great to see a, an organization that we have experience with, that has handled complex construction issues successfully, and to come in low bid and at almost $500,000 below engineering estimates. We don't see that too often. So it certainly sounds like something that needs to be done, considering the age of the current tanks and their limited pumping capacity, and how we, we've got to bring it up to speed and up to current conditions and be able to be prepared for additional growth in that area too, right?
It will, like I said, the area is pretty well-developed as it is. It's just we're not, we don't have the, the capacity and the existing pipeline and the, in the tank storage for things, things such as fire flow.
Does this have built-in redundancy?
As far as, there'll be multiple pumps in the pump station, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from council?
Phil?
All right, what, what's happening here? Councilwoman Forworth.
I'm turning off my withdraw quest, so I don't mess up again. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about, you know, two existing 200,000-gallon tanks, replacing them with 750, so that's almost a three times amount of above-the-ground eyesore. And I, I notice the tanks now as I'm driving down the road. What, are you at all concerned about the neighborhood reaction to something of this mass and scale being put right there?
Well, it's, the tank will replace the two tanks as they sit currently. The diameter of the tank will allow us to keep the tank not, it won't be much taller than what you see there now. It's not going to be a long, a very tall skinny silo. Like I said, the diameter will allow us to, to bring it down to, we just can't, with the communication towers and stuff that are up there and everything that's there, we can't, we can't go any bigger than the footprint we have. It's just, we're kind of confined by space.
And the other thing I appreciated in reading the pre-work was that you were very concerned about water runoff and erosion, and is that because of the, not height, but mass that you're putting in on this piece of property?
It has, it has more to do with, the existing roadway that goes up to the tank now is just a dirt road with really no way to convey drainage as it comes down the hill. The water currently just comes down to Douglas and then disperses. So the idea here is we're going to improve that roadway, install drainage ditches, put a, basically a settling pond on our current tank site, and then that, we can disperse that water effectively, rather than just have it scatter everywhere.
So the mass of the tank itself, are you, should we have any concerns that we're going to see flooding coming down the hill onto Willow Creek because, because rain's going to drop like it does here, and it's, doesn't have as much ground as it used to have to, you know, that's, that's my concern, is are we really thinking through the implications of something this big right there from a drainage and perspective?
And like I said, that's part of what this whole design was, was about, was to improve drainage on that site. And like I said, as far as surface area of the new 750,000-gallon tank, it's not significantly larger than the two 200,000-gallon tanks that are there currently.
Okay.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Tim, you probably might have already answered this question, but how old are the tanks that we're replacing?
That one, I was trying to do some research on that today. I'm not sure exactly how old the tanks are, if they were both constructed at the same time, or if one preceded the other.
Yeah.
I, I'm assuming based off the age of the pump station, stuff like that, they have been there for a while.
Like 50?
And especially the area this services. This service is a quite large area in that, that's, well, I think when I moved here, we all refer to as North Prescott. I think more it's kind of North Central Prescott now than it, than it is North Prescott.
So probably like the 60s.
I'm going to guess, yes.
Something like that. Okay. I would just like to comment and commend our Public Works Department for keeping an eye out for us on how important our water and sewer infrastructure is for our quality of life and also for our health and safety. If anyone's ever lived in a third world country where they don't have any infrastructure, I think that we take a lot of this, the general public takes a lot of this for granted, and I just want them to be aware of what a good job I believe we do. This is just an investment of our water user fees back into the community, and our infrastructure is owned by the taxpayers and the water users. In England, they privatized their water and sewer infrastructure in 1987 against the will of the people, and now you have private investors that are in charge of this important infrastructure, and they have not invested dollars. Their, their water and sewer infrastructure is failing, and everyone's paying much higher rates than they should have. So I just wanted to make that point, and thank you for doing this project. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Withdraw my question. Thank you.
Well, I think at this point, is there any public comment?
There is not, Mayor.
Then I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please proceed.
But I have a technical question. Can we, there's two motions in there. Can we make both at the same time?
You can do it as one motion, that's fine.
Okay, therefore, I- Okay, therefore, I move to approve City Contract 2025-081 and approve City Contract
Second.
Well done, Councilman. So we have a motion and second, please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Next, we have approval of City Contract Number 2024-121A2, an amendment to City Contract Number 2024-121 with Danson Construction LLC for Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Two to construct Phase Three of the Streets Division Administration Building.
Okay. I always do that, sorry. Okay, Mayor and Council, good evening. Janet Ramsey, Public Works, and the guy at the podium just followed me in the building, so I You may or may not recognize him in the tie, but that is the snow boss, Brian Scott. He's got not only a tie, but he's got a jacket on tonight, too, so just saying. Mayor and Council, about two years ago, Community Development, now Community Development Director Chelsea Walton met me in the old city council chambers and said, "Do you think that Public Works could use this building that we acquired?" And she described the metal building, and the wheels started to turn. The answer to that was, before she finished the sentence, "Yes, yes, we could." And in fact, I had been only with the department for a short time, but I already knew that we had a lot of issues with equipment that sits outside all the time. We had a lot of dangerous equipment at the time. We've corrected some of that. The snow facility is a beautiful thing and much, much safer for all of our staff. But we were also still missing office space, conference space, living space, and most importantly, and storage space, of course, for all of our vital records, but most importantly, we were missing a lot of space to store a lot of those very expensive vehicles. So the answer to that was, yes, 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 and yes. And in fact, as we began to contemplate the project, we decided not only could the building suit our needs for today, but also for a lot of tomorrows. So we have approached this project in three phases. Phase one was the engineering and design services. We completed that, so check. Phase two was the site preparation improvements and the pad. And in fact, we have recently, well, we're about complete with that, right? So we're going to call that check. And we are here tonight for your approval of Phase Three, which is the really fun part. That's the vertigo construction. And just as a reminder, this is this space that's across the street from where Street Maintenance is currently, so across the street from the transfer station. Street Maintenance is, in this process, is squeezing the wastewater treatment plant out of the way a little bit, but that's okay because the succession plan is that they are centralizing out to the wastewater, or to the treatment plant at the airport. So this all works in conjunction, and I would like to just add before we move on that not only is this space really important for all the things that we've already talked about, but also for the solid waste folks, you know, we are also currently working on a site plan to reconfigure, reimagine that space. And I will tell you that the office space there for the staff is already there, back-to-back, and touching one another in the office when they're doing work unintentionally, I assure you. And also, the conference space, the lunch space, the staff space to read their emails and do their work, it's all the same space. So this is a really, really great solution, and we're really excited about that. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian and let him share some more details as we go forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Scott, Street Maintenance Superintendent. Thank you for this opportunity. We're really excited about this. This is the culmination of a long process and a much-needed space for us well into the future. So the rendering you see up there just kind of gives a little bit of scale to the size of the building. It's large. The upstairs, which you can see by the little guy up there, we talked a little bit about this in our last meeting, that's the mezzanine that Janet spoke about. That's records retention and other storage up there. Just the records retention area in there, I believe, is right at, or approximately 3,000 square feet. So that's a really sizable space, can store a lot of records for many, many years to come. Next slide, please, Janet. So here, another is just kind of a rendering of the elevation views to kind of give it a little bit of scale. It'll have within it 1,300 square feet approximately of administrative space. Next slide, please, Janet. As Janet referred to, you can see that the bulk of, that's the total footprint of the building right there. The bulk of that space is dedicated to that weather-sensitive equipment. We have a lot of it. We get very cold here in the wintertime. We have a lot of rodents, and we've never really had a safe, secure place to keep that type of equipment. We've begged, borrowed, and stole what space we can to protect it the best we can, but we still incur a lot of cost for that. So 9,500 square feet of the total 15,000 square feet is dedicated for that purpose. That's going to, we're going to realize a huge cost savings over time because of that. This building is fully heated, cooled, all HVAC systems, so we, and the rodents. Rodents get to a lot of our equipment, and it does as much damage, maybe sometimes in some cases more so, than freeze thaw does. Excuse me. So that's the really critical, important part of this whole process. Next slide, please, Janet. So that's what we started with, right there. It was basically kind of a retention basin. As Janet said, it's at the current wastewater treatment plant at Sundog Ranch Road. In the background, you can see what we refer to as our spreader racks, what is commonly known as our snow facility. Great big improvement safety-wise and for our equipment as well with this. If we move to the next slide, please? So this, some of you will remember this day. This was a very proud day for us, our groundbreaking, and that's where we currently sat at that point. We've moved forward now to what it looks like today.
Councilman Gomboji, I just wanted to point out here on this slide really quickly. I did crop out the John Deere equipment for you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, and we'd like to emphasize the fact that all the cats really kind of ran the deer off, so that's, as a longtime equipment operator, so this is what it looks like today. That is the fully completed pad. That is the footprint of the building. As Janet mentioned, we're just almost done with the site work. They're doing a little bit of the utility extensions that come off of Sundog Ranch Road and off the facility as it exists to bring the utilities to the building, but that is at grade and it has been certified by one of the engineering companies we work with today. As a reminder, this is the building. That is it in pretty much its entirety. Other, it's the shell, I should say, it's the shell of the building. That's what we acquired in that settlement was a shell. So that doesn't count all the augmentation that goes along with it, the mezzanine, the office space, the break room space, meeting space, things like that. So there it is, and now it's been about three years, I think, on the ground, a little, maybe a little bit more. So we're really excited to get this thing stood up and really get rolling on it. Just another reminder, this is some of the weather-sensitive equipment. You'll see in the upper right-hand corner, that's one of our three street sweepers. They rely on water to keep the dust down. They are very weather-sensitive, and if not, you're not able to drain all the water out of it. Just one 20-degree day is going to break a whole lot of water lines. Upper left is one of our newest acquisitions, a much-needed acquisition, a combo truck to help us clean the drainage systems around town. As weather-sensitive as the sweepers are, that's about tenfold with that close to $500,000 piece of equipment. Patch truck in the lower right and one of the asphalt rollers we have on the left, all very weather-sensitive, very rodent-sensitive. Lot of moving parts. Next slide, please. And really with that, if, we would love to entertain and answer any questions that y'all might have for us this evening.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is, like I said, this is our third ask, so this is the third and final, we hope, and so nothing new here, but if you have any questions, again, here we are, we'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Janet. Thanks, Scott. Councilmember Ruasing?
Thank you. There's no doubt in my mind that this is a much-needed project, but I do have a few questions about how we're paying for it. Is this project, since this is the Streets Division, paid for out of the city-dedicated 1% road tax?
This building is, in fact, funded exclusively out of the Streets funds. So it does include two things. It includes the Streets Transportation Sales Tax, and it includes some HERF funds. I'm not entirely sure that that's dedicated in this particular case, but it does not, under any circumstances, include general funds.
Okay, because that, my question, I asked that question just in case member of the public says, "Why aren't you using this money to build a new fire station?"
Yes, ma'am.
And the answer is, "We can't because we're following..." Okay. And then my next question is, this is a 15,000-square-foot building, and the city records are going to take up 3,000 square feet of it. And there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that we do need proper space for our city vital records that we have to store. But my question is, if this is being paid for with a road tax, how do we justify storing city records in here, which actually don't have anything to do with streets or?
It's not city records, it's Streets records.
It's Public Works, primarily Public Works records in the form of...
Thank you for the clarification. Just wanted to be sure.
We have a separate off-site facility that we utilize for all of our other records, so it's not associated with this building.
Okay, thank you.
And I might also clarify that. So that 3,000 square foot is on a second floor. So the 15,000 square foot that is the footprint of the building on the first floor is still completely occupied and utilized by the Street Maintenance Division.
Yeah, from the schematics that you provided, it looks like that second level, administrative level goes the entire length of the building, but probably less than half of it.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So most of your equipment and vehicles are parked on the opposite side, and then you have a, I think, a stairway that leads up to the administrative level, and then it's separated based on storage and administrative work up there, right?
So that's not entirely correct, Mayor. Good, the lower-level houses, all of Street Maintenance, including the administrative building, the entire upper deck is dedicated to record storage and then some miscellaneous street maintenance storage, things that we have to store and keep safe for different uses, say, seasonally, right?
So you'll have equipment storage underneath the administrative level?
It's records only, to be
Records only?
Records only, and there is, in fact, a lift that will help us to take those records up to that second-floor mezzanine. So they're safe, secure, they won't be flooded anymore. That's been an ongoing issue for some time, I guess.
A lot of records.
But all, right, it is. But all the living space and all the equipment is downstairs.
Understood. Okay, any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion on this, then.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract 2024-121A2.
Second.
You got a motion and a second? Do we have any public comment? I don't think so, right?
We don't, Mayor.
Okay. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is going to be a great
It was worth putting that tie on, Scott, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 10E.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1877 in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the City of Prescott's Land Development Code, Section 2.5.6, Guest Quarters, to allow for accessory dwelling units to be rented long-term, subject to requirements listed within Article 2.5.6. Addition of definition for ADUs under LDC Table 11.2.5 General Terms.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kaylee Nunez, community planner. I don't know how I got so lucky to have the last item on voting night, so I'm going to try to keep this fairly straightforward. So an overview of the proposal, it's to alter the language of the LDC Section 2.5.6, which is currently titled Guest Quarters. These changes have been contemplated by staff for some time to create a means for legal long-term rentals in residential districts and to provide more housing opportunities, or rental stock, rather. So on the next slide, the strike-through represents text to be deleted, and the underlined is text to be inserted. So I'm going to hit you with a wall of text, but I felt it was important to get it all on one slide. So you just need to focus on the underlined bits and the strike-through. A lot of it's just adding in the term accessory dwelling unit in addition to the guest quarters. So really, the difference between the two guest quarters can be seen as non-paying, you know, guests of the primary residence owner or caretakers. ADUs lends itself to a rental. So you see that, yes, ADUs is added several times. C is eliminated because it says guest quarters may only be utilized by guests and persons employed on-site by the resident of the principal dwelling. Then in D, following a discussion at planning and zoning, we added a sentence for private sub-meters are encouraged to promote conservation of utilities. And again, kind of struck a redundant portion in E where it says such quarters shall not be utilized as separate rental units. Also, F, tandem parking shall be allowed for guest quarters and ADUs only. There's always concern about parking. We're going to talk more about that a couple slides down, but in our code revision, we do make a stipulation that they provide one-off street parking space for each ADU or guest quarters. It was also recommended at planning and zoning that we insert a definition into our definition tables for ADUs. So this would be it, you know, a smaller independent residential dwelling unit located on the same single-family zone lot as an existing single-family home. ADUs can be attached or detached to the primary single-family home. Okay, so very relevant state legislation, ARS 9-461.18. This is going to go into effect January 1st. So this is just a portion of it. There's, gosh, I think it goes down to I, if I'm remembering correctly, but a municipality may not do any of the following. And I don't need to read it verbatim, but basically prohibit use of a single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit as a separately leased long-term rental house, housing. It also prohibits us, the state does not want us to require that a lot or parcel have additional parking to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit, or require payment of fees instead of additional parking. Also prohibited, set restrictions for ADUs that are more restrictive than those for single-family dwellings. And last but not least, set rare or side setbacks for ADUs that are more than five feet from the property line. Also down there, ARS 9-500.39, that was passed in 2018, I believe, and that precluded jurisdictions in Arizona from prohibiting short-term slash vacation rentals. So short-term is defined as a stay of 30 days or less. So again, I think everyone knows at this point, we are required, we can have some, we have requirements for building safety and life safety with vacation rentals, but beyond that, we cannot prohibit them. So we already have to allow vacation rentals in residential districts. This would just make the code reads so that you could do long-term rentals as well.
Councilman Gomboji, you have a question?
Yes.
Well, Kaylee, I'm going to ask you to go back four slides, one right there.
Nope.
Right there.
All of text. It looked better on my computer screen, that color. E. Yes.
You're not holding down your mic, Ted.
Oh, you think? It says there, however It says there, however such quarters shall not be utilized as separate rental units.
Yeah, we got rid of that. It's a little disjointed.
I'm a little flummoxed here. I thought the idea was they could be used as separate rental?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's going to be eliminated because?
That's the strike through, not the other line.
It's deleted. Yes.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. As Chair of the Water Issue Subcommittee, we've, we really support sub-metering. And I have a few questions about Section 2.5.6 that you highlighted, Paragraph D. And because it's somewhat confusing because we have attached and we have detached ADUs.
Yes.
And I think it would be impossible for an attached ADU to have separate sub-metering. But I'd like to see stronger language.
Okay.
Something that would use the terminology, all detached ADUs shall be sub-metered and delete the separate utility meters shall not be allowed. And then also change the word encouraged. You know, our ordinances shouldn't sound like a group session or something like that. We should change it to something stronger like required. Sub-meters are required for detached ADUs to promote conservation because I've been a resident of Prescott a long time. And there's a lot of separate garages that have been converted to residences, and they've been occupied long-term by people that are working or retirees. And they're all up and down Mount Vernon Park Avenue. And I think that it's important that we make all the new conversions or new builds of ADUs having separate meters because having everybody all on one water meter is, makes no sense nowadays. And also, we need to address the parking issue because people are going to be parking on the streets in front of other people's houses, blocking driveways. And I think we really need to require the owners of these ADUs to maybe put up some signage, to educate their tenants, paint red curbs so that they don't park too close to driveways. But it's definitely going to change the character of the neighborhood because we can't restrict how many ADUs are in the, in the community, I imagine.
Yeah, we, well, we can restrict it to one per lot in single-family residential. So, you know, there is, well, I won't get into it because there's also legislation for jurisdictions over 75,000 that is going to require that you allow two per lot. But we're not there yet. So noted on D, we can expand upon that and modify it a bit. With the parking, since it sounds like we're probably going to have to bring this back, I might consult legal about how the state language that goes into effect on January 1st, how that's going to affect us as far as the parking goes. Those are good points.
Oh, that was my question. If that ARS says you can't require additional parking, and we're saying that you have to have one-off street parking per ADU, isn't that in conflict?
It is. And I've had this conversation, I might pull George up to the podium. Oh, he's not. Because the way I see it is that would just be overridden by, you know, ARS. So I'm not sure there's even a point in putting it in there.
I think, I'm George Worley, Planning Manager. I think one of the things that the state legislature didn't do when they came up with their, with their language, thank you, is consider that an ADU is going to occupy a separate building that could be occupied by any number of uses. And in our case, we have three different uses that we assume will happen in those buildings, guest quarters, short-term rentals, or ADUs. And under two of those three things, we are allowed to request, require additional parking spaces. And we've required one consistently in our code since its adoption. So that, that requirement for a parking space for guest quarters and for short-term rentals is legitimate under the state statute. We only run into a conflict if someone says it's an ADU. And at that point, we wouldn't be able to enforce the parking requirement if it's an ADU. If they're using it for either of the other two possibilities, we would require the parking space. The same applies to the setback limitations. So if we take it out altogether, we're taking it out for all three uses rather than just the one use where we have a conflict with the state. And once this becomes state law, it would override our rules anyway. So we believe the requirement for the one parking space is important to leave in there to cover the other uses that could happen.
Well, I know there are some members of the community that are concerned whence, if this is passed, that it's going to increase the number of on-street vehicles. But I would, I would say it's more likely to reduce them. Because if you have somebody that's staying in an ADU for long-term, and they probably don't have two cars, their likelihood of having more vehicles parked on the street are probably less likely than if the current short-term rentals are used for, you know, weekend party locations with multiple members or people that are involved in it, there are probably going to be a lot more cars for short-term rentals than there would be for a long-term rental.
Yes, that's, that's our take as planners. I actually did research on it. And albeit, these were for larger cities that have more public transit. But it was like the average car for each ADU, like car to ADU ratio is like 0.8. So yeah, you're absolutely correct. Versus a vacation rental, you may have several friends or family members meeting up, you know, to go to that one rental for the weekend.
And I would support Councilmember Rusing's recommendation that a detached ADU would require a sub-meter. I mean, if we just encourage it, the property owner's not going to spend extra money to put it in. But if it's required, then at least the person dwelling there for long-term is going to be thinking about how much water they use because they're going to be paying for it. Councilmember Rusing, excuse me, Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you. I too had a concern with the metering, so I'm glad that's going to be amended. I actually wanted to go further with parking. I wanted to have one park, parking, off-street parking per resident because a single ADU could have a working couple and have two cars. And so the minute four houses on the block get working couples in there, we're going to have four more cars on streets. And some of our streets are so crowded and so tight right now that this is going to turn into, you know, a major concern for the residents there. And so I'm still very concerned about the parking situation. And more importantly than that, my other concern is going all the way back to when we first had this discussion with the Workforce Housing Committee at the beginning of the year. I want to understand how, by allowing this or changing this, we are not going to lose control of the growth and the explosion eventually of potentially more short-term rentals because people try a foot in the door with long-term rental and they don't like it. I don't know, but I'm not sure that we've really gotten to this council that I've heard. Now, I don't go to the Workforce Housing Committee meetings. So, but I'm not sure that we really understand our strategy. And, and therefore, I require that we have measures that can be shared with the public and council of what is going on in this space. As this, if this passes today and this proceeds, I think we need some visibility about what's going on. Because I do think there's a lot of people in the community that are concerned, who won't be doing this on their own lot, but they're very concerned about what's going to happen in the four residents around them. So I think visibility would be a really good thing. And that's one of my requests, is that we have measures. And what I don't know how to do a measure of is, is this ordinance really contributing to the growth of workforce housing? That's my biggest question. And I don't understand how we're going to measure that or how we're going to get there. And I know that's the intent, but it's still not linear to me.
Noted. So when we floated this idea about three years ago, it was post-COVID to the council, it was, it had gained quite a bit of momentum. Now we are at the point with the ADU movement where we are behind it, which is fine. You know, we're a more conservative community. Property rights are strong. The thing is, we're going to be, the state's going to override us on some of this, whether we like it or not. There is a lot of research, and I'm happy to bring it, on how ADUs contribute to communities. And there are pros and cons. I have a pretty big pros and cons list. But the pros seem to outweigh the cons. And the idea is, it is not like one fell swoop solution to the housing crisis. It's just like a bite-sized approach, but bites add up. And a lot of, in the planning sphere, it's argued that these ADUs have less of a detrimental impact on the character of neighborhoods than, say, large apartment complexes, you know, on the fringe of them. So, you know, we can definitely bring this back. And, you know, I like the idea of expanding on the metering and making it solid, like you have to have a sub-meter. But as far as being able to prohibit this from happening, I'm not a legal expert, but we're going to be made to do it. So we might as well do it in our fashion, you know, upfront.
Yeah, it's coming. The state is mandating it. But I, that doesn't, shouldn't, you shouldn't feel pressured to today approve something that you can't really approve.
Mayor Protam, I know you're the liaison to the Workforce Housing Committee. So I think your, your experience with that will speak to Councilwoman Ferworth's concerns, I think.
Yeah, I kind of want to address several things that have been said here today too about the ADUs. There is no point in thinking about, how can we stop this? Because we're not going to be able to stop it. The ADUs, in terms of the workforce housing, as Kaylee mentioned, is really just one tool in the toolbox that, you know, in the outer, bigger communities, they've been looking at and exploring and gearing up, thinking that this will help. You know, nobody really has any complete data of how it's going to affect Prescott. But Kaylee referred to some data that's out there in bigger cities that have been a little further or gone into this a little before us. But I, with workforce housing, I'm not saying not to have them. Obviously, I can't. I'm skeptical, let's put it that way, how much it's going to help, number one. Number two, I do have quite a bit of experience with this because I do live in the historic area downtown. And I'm not really clear, when you ask on item F, under 2.5.6, that anyone wanting to do this, it says one off-street parking space shall be required. Okay, I spent many years down on Pleasant Street. How am I, if I were to have an ADU there, which I don't live there anymore, but this is a perfect example of it, how do I go out and save a parking place in front of my house legally when I can't even park there myself because everybody in the neighborhood has so many cars? I would have to, so there is no way I could ever say or agree that I could provide that on that street, which is part of the reason I left. Now, that's going to be a hard one to say. You can, you can stand up and go, yeah, I saved that spot for you, but I can't go out there and put cones because I think that's illegal.
It's off-street.
It, yeah, so the language is off-street. It has to be owned property and accessible, either from the alley or from the front of the property.
Oh, you're right. But what I'm, what I'm saying is, that's only if you have one person living there. And that doesn't happen a lot. I mean, it does happen. Yeah, no, I agree with you on that. The other problem that I see with this, and I would like it to come back, and we can explore in addition that I'd like to talk to you about. Again, and I think I've actually talked to you, George, about this problem, and Janet, and I know she's left already. I have this in my new neighborhood. Well, I've been there now for 15 years. But two ADUs were allowed to go in the alley behind me, a little further up my alley. And my alley's probably 500 minimum feet up into the back of a park. They are using the alley. It's an unimproved alley. They can't get up to the ADUs in the winter. And if we're going to, as a city, agree to approve ADUs, we need to do something about making a policy or somehow, maybe we have to change the land development code. We need to improve those alleys. There's, it's all mud and dirt. They park down in front of my house in the winter. They have to walk 150, or no, 500 feet to get up there. It's just bad planning. If we could have some kind of an agreement, if we decide to allow an ADU in an unimproved alley and we're allowing the access, then we need to improve that alley. I mean, we just have to do that. Because what they're talking about here, I have dealt with that now for many years, where they come down, they park at the end, they block my driveway. And they asked, you know, which is fine. I'm fine with it. They walk through my street because it takes off about 200 feet or through my lot. But we've got to think this through. I've, again, I don't have a problem with the ADUs. Just our part as a city needs to be readdressed when we're talking about parking and access. I think we should have, if you're going to, you know, allow four or five ADUs in an unimproved alley, then we've got to get that on the schedule and get that alley improved. Or we're now creating more problems by doing that. So anyway, what I was going to ask is, you know, some kind of a clause in there for consideration for unimproved alley access. And then I wanted to ask you, in that ordinance, they're saying that the setback is going to be now five feet. Isn't ours currently for a garage, seven feet? Our rear setback for a garage was reduced a few years ago to seven?
Yes, so citywide, a detached accessory structure can be within five feet of the rear lot line, six feet if there's an alley.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, we're already bound to that for detached accessory structures.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. So they're, they're mandating that we allow five feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the rest is just pictures, which is fun. So, but I've got the notes. I can certainly, you know, depending on what you want to see, I can bring you more data. I love data. So, but I realize we all want to get home too. So does anyone have any more questions for me?
Well, I just know the state requirement for no restrictions on short-term rentals has really caused huge problems in some of our other cities. City of Page, City of Sedona, we've had major developers come in and buy a whole neighborhood and turn all of them into short-term rentals with all kinds of impacts, with multiple, I mean, numerous vehicles. And I think at least allowing a long-term rental would more likely reduce the number of short-term rentals because the property owner will have a long-term income stream from a long-term rental rather than trying to make it up on a party weekend. So I think at least requiring one off-street parking space would have some beneficial impact. And you're right, if you have a couple that are both working, then maybe an additional vehicle is going to have to find a place on the street. But I think compared to what is likely to happen with more short-term rentals, that's less of an impact than the short-term rental, you know, party weekend, party home is going to generate as far as people that live in that particular neighborhood or on that street. So where are we now? Do we want to bring this back and have it revised?
Do you want me to make a motion?
You have public comment, Mayor.
Okay, public comment.
Howard Mechanic.
And credit goes to Howard for that recommendation for the sub-meter, which will now be?
Okay, Howard, you get credit for that.
I meant to, and then I was like, I got?
I should get credit for part of it because I actually supported what Councilmember Rusing is suggesting. I suggested a mandate rather than a suggestion. I suggested a mandate rather than a suggestion, encouragement. That's what I'm supporting. So I brought up the subject. I wasn't going to push the requirement, because I wanted this generally to pass, and I didn't think I was going to push it to delay it or do word smithing on that, but I certainly support for detached. Or I would also add, any ADU that's detached or has a separate single utility feed, because it could be detached, or it could be attached to the house. And if it's a structure that's attached to the house, let's take the water. It may have one water line that, a new water line that's going to that attached. It's an attached unit, but only has one water line going from the main unit to the other. It would be beneficial, and maybe the city, I was going to come here and suggest that the Water Issues Committee or staff look at that specifically. If you want to just go with detached, that's okay. But you might also want to consider if there's a separate feed that can be metered, that it be sub-metered, and that, that applies for water, electric, and gas if, if used, if there's gas connected. But I also wanted to address what Councilmember Furrworth brought up about the workforce housing element here. How is this a deal with the workforce housing? There's no guarantee that these units will be used for workforce housing. They could be used for grandma and grandpa. They could be used, you know, like existing as short-term rentals, they could be luxury units and be out of touch, out of reach for workforce housing. It could be used for a lot of things. But right now, if you're looking for a 3,000-square-foot home in Prescott, you can find one. If you're looking for a 600-square-foot unit, you can't. So there, this is going to give us the opportunity to have smaller units. And obviously, smaller units are going to be less expensive for rental than a 3,000-square-foot unit. So this gives us the opportunity to maybe have some workforce, because there's no guarantee.
That's all, Mayor.
You will. I'll entertain a motion on this, whatever that might be.
Mayor, I move to postpone ordinance number 2024-1877 for further revisions and to be brought back at a later date.
Can we have a date specific on this one?
If the council would like to set a date specific, you certainly can. It's not a requirement. We could just say a future meeting. I don't know what staff's input is on that.
Yeah, well, we'll keep it moving, certainly, but we'd have to take it back to P and Z, too, so that kind of spaces it out.
So how long of a process is that going to be?
Well, we could do, let's see, to the 5th, we have to get things in two weeks before. So probably after, yeah, the 1st of the year, it'd be in January, it would come to you. If there's room on an agenda.
Yeah, voting items are easier than study sessions, as you all know, so.
Okay, Mayor, may I revise my motion?
Yeah, why don't you, city clerk can give you a date specific, and you can add that to your motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number, excuse me, I move to postpone ordinance number 2024-1877 for further revisions to be brought back as an agenda item on January...
28th.
28th, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're at the end of our meeting.
We are.
Okay. So I will close with something a little longer than usually my individual quote, because I thought it's very appropriate. Before they stepped off the Mayflower in November of 1620, the male passengers led by William Bradford signed a compact guaranteeing to each other that they would make, abide by and enforce their own laws, thereby creating America's first constitution. America, the land of the free and the brave, was born that day. On November 11th, 2024, America will celebrate the 404th anniversary of the signing of the Mayflower Compact. William Bradford was the first and longest-serving governor chosen by the citizens of Plymouth Colony. Bradford said, "These pioneering citizens of Plymouth were by the blessing of God and the first beginners, and in a sort, the foundation of all the plantations and colonies in New England." John Quincy, President John Quincy Adams believed the compact was man's first attempt at self-government, and should be ranked with Magna Carta and perhaps considered America's first constitution. He said, "The Mayflower Compact is perhaps the only instance in human history of that original social compact, which philosophers have imagined as the only legitimate source of government." So on November 11th of this year will be the 404th anniversary of the signing of the Mayflower Compact, which obviously led to the creation of our country and our constitutional republic. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.